I will call the Tuesday, September twenty first, twenty twenty one meeting of the board of supervised order. We have myself and Mike Steinis, we have Larry who's sunning himself in Colorado on the phone. We have Lisa and Bjorn from the auditor's office, Luanne Goki, our administrative assistant. And the first item on the agenda today is to open the public hearing on the USDA grant application for ISIS nine one one radio system upgrade.
Lynn, would you like to give us a brief?
Yeah, Lynn, anything you want to say?
No, it's just just a formality process that we have to go through to apply for USD funding. So basically, one of them is to have a public hearing to see if anybody's opposed or for it. And so that's what we're doing here today. And once we get this public hearing closed, I'll get it submitted to USDA and go on to the next phase.
Okay. Is there anyone online that would like to speak on this? Chad or Kelly or Teresa? Or on that shoot? It's kind of adding.
I would make a motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you.
Uh, did you want to second that, Larry?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carrying. And we probably have to approve applying for it.
Make a motion to approve.
I would second.
A motion and a second to authorize Lynn to go ahead and apply for the grant. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carrying.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you for gonna? Next is David Dryer, Jackson County engineer. Morning, David.
Morning. We have one permit on the agenda. The entrance permit for Aaron Ward of Otter Creek Township. Section fifteen, two hundred and fifty fourth street is looking for a class D residential permit. It's been reviewed in the field and we recommend approval and includes permits for this meeting.
Make a motion to approve the permit from Mr. Aaron Ward.
I second that.
Motion and a second to approve the entrance permit for Aaron Ward. All those in favor? Aye. Aye, motion carrying.
Next, that's, that's all I have for the permits. Z thirty four paving nation have the wearing surface done this week. It's a multi lift paving process. So they've been working on it since Friday of last week.
Is that north or south?
That's the piece south of sixty four.
Okay.
And they should have that finished up. The culvert on four seventy fifth is, is in place. The concrete head walls have been poured. They're looking to put the gravel down over the culvert tomorrow. And they've got a lot of earthwork to do there. So probably into the week, maybe early next week to have that open, which should hopefully make the property owners in the area, they're happy. The Taylor Bridge on Bucks Creek is solely proceeding. They should have the deck on in two to three weeks. Hundred eighty eighth street, the Schrader Bridge over Lighto Creek. They got these abutments working on there, having to drill through some stones. So they've been working through that, but that's, that's proceeding as programmed. The Millertown Bridge concrete has been repaired yesterday. The contractor was in town and gotten it taken care of. So just trying to wrap projects up before snow flies.
So if you had an opportunity in the last couple of days to drive between McCoke and limestone kilns?
I have.
And seeing what in the world happened?
There's with the dips. Is that what?
Yeah, well, black stuff all over.
Then I haven't noticed. So like somebody attacked tar road on it?
I, I don't know what it is.
I just come through there. Yeah, I thought yesterday too, and I didn't notice anything.
I didn't see anything. I know that there are some pavement dips where there's some soft spots and the mud jackers supposed to come in and pump those up and get them a little more level. But I haven't noticed anything. Somebody tracking.
Is it on the east side of the road?
It goes back and forth.
Oh, like black marks, like somebody's been screwing on tires.
I did see them.
Yeah.
Yeah, there was somebody having some fun.
It looks awful.
There's several places.
It's not totally that, but it's costly. You can only hope that they will blow their transmission.
Yeah, that's whole.
Well, it's actually putting a coating on the road. The rubber sealer. Yeah, no, wasting rubber.
There is, there is some of them out there. Yeah, I didn't know.
They're a lot, I mean, on top of all.
It's on both sides. It's just like they were having.
Somebody just got new tires that.
Mother paid for.
Without a doubt.
Yeah.
The other thing I wanted to ask, do you know if, has Alex or anybody looked at the parking lot here? For the problem that we're having with water getting into the basement?
I know that Mike asked about it and I, you know, Marty never stopped in. I know that they put in those pores there because water was tipping in off the sidewalks running in.
I think this is over towards the car.
It is. But we want to get something done with that. And so we talked about maybe having Alex look at it to see if he could come up with some kind of a recommendation to try to eliminate that problem.
The last I talked to Marty and I believe I talked to you afterwards, I thought that between you and Marty, that wasn't that big of an issue that we could probably.
But we just need to.
Oh, a little forward. I don't know that I thought Marty was going to grab me and we're going to go, but I'm never.
Well, you grab him, okay?
Yeah, you can anticipate Marty coming. He's in the sink.
Okay.
Off the wall is funny. They put my hand on it.
Hail Mary. Okay, thank you.
We have a call from a gentleman for some thing of overheady trees on two sixteen, but I thought I seen Roger outside the door yesterday.
You got a hold of him?
He was walking in when I was walking out yesterday. I think he's going to come talk.
Okay, now it's like, don't think we have any visitors or citizens on unless Chad wants to address something. He's a Motorola. Okay. Okay, Lisa, do you want to?
I can. This morning, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the September fourteenth, twenty twenty one work proceedings as written by Honor Smith and authorized publication in the official newspapers. Please come in.
So move. A motion and a second to approve the minutes of the previous meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carrying.
I also have on my agenda for a discussion of possible motion on the non five oh one C three. But it is my understanding that Steve Lukey is coming in this morning. I can't wait or we can just approve it now or you can, you know, it's up to you.
Was it going to come in probably around nine thirty?
It was my understanding.
Why don't we waste?
So I think we'll just table that.
That'll, that'll be fine.
And then just as a side note, I know that we had a discussion last week concerning the Motorola and the payment and, and everything that we talked about as far as the art money. I just want you both to know and, and Larry, I'm sorry, that I did have quite a conversation with Lynn Meeninger last weekend with county attorney Sarah Davenport. All of my questions have been answered and I think we're okay to proceed.
Yeah, from, from the information I received and gathered that it's contracts with the state.
Yep, yep, we're all good.
Okay, appreciate.
Okay. We're going to recess till we're joined by Becky. She's supposed to be here. Did you want to call her?
Becky. Good morning, how are you?
We're just, just wonderful. We're using bottom sun ourselves. Dream on.
So I am here today based on your motion last week to approve the new deputy case. This would require a policy amendment because it is part of our personnel policy. So the motion that you made last week to approve the new wave scale as presented by the sheriff would modify section five of earnings and hours of work in our employee handbook. I had sent out information, just basically a recap of the information that the sheriff had submitted as well as the policy amendment that outlined those exact changes as approved last week. It was simply took a motion to amend that section of the handbook and the language will be updated. And that's all that would need to be done to take care of that.
Okay, what is the wishes of the board?
I would make a motion to approve.
Is there a second? I will second motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. No. Motion carried.
Great. I'll have the language updated in the handbook. There's nothing for the board to sign since it's already in the employee handbook. So that language was just modified. Couple of departmental updates while I'm here. Interviews for the VA director have wrapped up. I anticipate the commission making a decision and or an offer this week. When more information is available on that, I will be sure to present that back to the board. And due to an employee resignation in the jail, we will be the, it's likely that they will advertise for a new jailer, a new on hall position to be filled. I think they're going to kind of work through some logistics and scheduling over there before that. But if you do see that hit the paper, we did have one resignation and that is why. In addition to that, does the board authorizing the new full time sheriff's deputies? My understanding, the sheriff will be modifying the civil service that is intent to fill that position at which time they will have to establish a list. And they will determine the means that they will go about to do that. There was a vacancy on the civil service commission as of this August. I don't know where filling that is at. I think that has to be done prior to the commission moving forward with testing or whatever they want to do with that. So I think the board points that we have a man check into that, but just so you're aware of that, that will need to be done so they can proceed with that.
Okay.
Okay.
And then we got our friendly letter.
We did, and my friendly response. So they do have to recertify before they are actually authorized to negotiate on behalf of any of those three units that are in that contract, which is why the language sent back to them is for that reason. When that concludes on October twenty sixth, if those three independent units, or if I ask me as their representative, we will negotiate. There's actually three separate units within that one contract between conservation, us and the jailer. So it could be three, could be none, could be one. We'll see what transpires after October and then we will proceed accordingly with that. Okay?
Yeah, all right. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, Luanne. This time we'll be joined by Ronan Goki, our administrative assistant.
Morning.
Morning.
Thank you.
Hello.
Okay, calendar for this week. Six P M. Tonight is the conservation board meeting in Hurstville. Larry, I assume you will not be here for that. So maybe Jack or Mike will go to that for you. Wednesday, September twenty second at nine A M. Is an Irish meeting in Dubuque also for Larry, but it's open to Jack or Mike as well. Twelve thirty on Wednesday, I tentatively have down Jack a nine eighty coalition meeting, but I haven't received confirmation of that yet. One thirty on Wednesday is an Isaacs meeting by Zoom for Larry, which I hope you can make from out there on the phone. Four P M. On Wednesday is an E C I A executive and council meeting along with E C D C. That will be in Dubuque for Jack. And right after that, at five o'clock is a B C I A legislative dinner. I'll also Dubuque for all of you. Thursday, September twenty third at nine A M. Is R P A meeting in Dubuque for Jack and Larry. Monday, September twenty seventh at ten A M. Is the Grantwood seating by way bus tour that starts at Bellevue State Park at ten A M. Nine A M. I think you need to R S V P for that if you want to go on that trip. Monday, September twenty, twenty seventh, or was there on there, three o'clock in the afternoon is the special meeting at, with the hospital by Zoom for everyone to discuss what they're going to do with the.
Is that three o'clock? I have. Yeah, I'm sorry. I thought I had four. I'm good.
Okay. Yeah, right. Four o'clock is, um, from four to six is the early chat that Iowa open house into which, at least for Jack.
Yeah, that's when they have all of the providers of services come and make a presentation of what they did the last year and what services they're providing. And we have that every fall. I just get an update and see how, obviously, we didn't have it last year because of, of the COVID. We just had a we tried to do it Zoom.
It's interesting, yes.
So we're having it next Monday.
And that's open for Mike as well if you want to go to that.
And I just, I, we have not been putting me on the calendar, but we, Lynn, and Rich, imagine myself and, and nine one one board have been meeting with several city councils around and, and discussing our nine one one proposal. So we have, last night we had McCoke City Council. Tonight we have Bellevue City Council. And we have nothing but positive feedback so far.
Okay, okay. Our next regular meeting will be on Tuesday, September twenty eighth at nine A M. And that afternoon at five o'clock is a Mississippi Valley workforce executive meeting by Zoom for Jack. Business today, we talked a couple of weeks ago, maybe a few weeks ago about the Pioneer cemeteries and their interim policies for the Pioneer cemeteries. We agreed that the lot fee for that should be three hundred dollars, but we didn't formalize that. We didn't make a motion to that effect. Formalize that it should be three hundred dollars.
Three hundred and thirty.
That's pretty handy.
I would make that motion.
Okay. A motion and a second to establish the lot fee of three hundred dollars for Pioneer cemeteries. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carrying.
And right now I'm starting work on the end of the year appointments. There are a lot of appointments to boards and commissions that expire on December thirty first every year. So I'm attempting to get a jump start on that. The first thing I want to talk about is the benefited fire district trustees. There are three benefited fire districts in the county. At this point, Sebula is gender balanced. Their trustees are gender balanced, but Andrew and Miles are not yet gender balanced. So I am looking for permission to publish a public notice like we did last year. It was quite a year ago. Inviting people to apply to be a trustee if they live in the fire district and in particular women, encouraging women to apply. So.
Andrew and Miles?
Andrew and Miles, correct.
Yeah, I would make a motion to go ahead and apply for that.
Go check with it.
And that's to go out for advertising for any interested female that might be willing, anyone.
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 Why?
Anyone can. Preferably, we need a female and.
Well, we will continue to do this every year until we get the board gender balanced. Yeah, so.
With every board.
Correct, correct.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carrying.
I have also put together a another public notice for the paper, inviting people to apply for the other vacancies, the vacancies on all the other boards and commissions that we have in the county. You have a list of the vacancies.
Right.
Um, and I am, if, if nobody has any objections to reappointing, who's on the list that expires December thirty first? I will reach out to those people and make sure they're willing to be re.
That's, that's the key.
Right. And if they are not, then they will be added to the vacancy list. Okay, we will have to do that as well.
You need action on that?
I need action and permission to.
With your permission to go out and reach out to the proposed.
Do we have a second? Did you hear what she said, Larry?
Not very good.
She's going to put together a list of vacancies that we might have on our various committees and publish those and talk to the people that's terms are expiring on the thirty first to see if they are interested. If they're not, then she will add those to the list.
Okay, that sounds good.
So you're seconding it?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carrying.
I did also want to make a note. We just talked about the civil service commission. There is a vacancy on there which is on your list of vacancies. But if we need the civil service commission, we need to make that appointment very quickly. We're going to have to have them in action. And we'll double check on that. The other one that we need to think about very soon is the compensation board vacancy. Because they meet once a year in November, so we kind of need to get that done.
Who's, who's representative is it that is?
Our, our supervisors.
I asked someone last night, but I gotta know.
Male or female?
Female.
I think it's a female that's going off, declined reappointments.
So they need to find another female or?
It's on the list of vacancies. I don't remember off the top of my head, but I put on there whether we need, okay. But I think we need a, a female on it to keep it gender balanced.
Okay, we can work on that. Find anybody in Utah that wants to do that. Larry, let us know.
It looks pretty bad out here.
Just ask him if, is, is there a Jackson County, Utah? Probably. We remember when that happened in the past. Jackson County, Wisconsin.
I skipped a little. On the Isaacs radio system, which I put on there, but did we not already take action on that?
No, no.
Okay, all right. Then we need action on the Isaacs nine one one radio system upgrade.
So I've had some discussions and Lisa had some discussions and we were concerned about our procurement policy and how to proceed and how to proceed. I see Chad is on the Zoom meeting. I don't know if he'd like to say anything. He's with Motorola and explain to us in an email what the contract was with the state.
But I guess Lisa, say what you found out.
I, I'm just going to say this. I, I was very happy to be visiting with, with Lynn and with county attorney Sarah Davenport, found out a lot of information. The nine one one board is actually formed by, in the Iowa code thirty, chapter thirty four A, and it kind of outlines as far as who's responsible for what. In the end, we found out that the equipment that is in the dispatch office is actually owned by Jackson County, which makes it really sense then, since we have the insurance on it. But in visiting with, with Lynn and with Sarah, we did find out that, and correct me if I'm wrong, Chad, but this is basically they're, they're going through the state government contract, which, you know, the state government has to follow a procurement policy. So it trickles down and in visiting with everybody, Sarah is comfortable with moving forward with what we have. And Lynn was great to explain a few things how they're done. I had a lot of information last week. It was really good conversation. So I have no, no qualms anymore about passing an audit. This is federal money and I was really concerned that we wouldn't pass the audit, but I, I have no qualms anymore.
Now, is this another reason why state came? Or is that a different?
That's different.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, so I, I think we're good with moving forward with the agreement that we can, we can do this without going out to bits.
Correct. I, and Lynn says, yes, we've, we've.
Because we're.
Because basically the state.
Has a contract with the state.
Yes.
We're not completely are, are we a hundred percent sure that this, we can use our A R P money for this?
Um, I, I believe we can because we know that.
That's certainly what it sounded like when we were.
That's correct.
It's, it's safety.
The only thing that we don't know yet is how, as an example, for these cities that you've been reaching out to, the only thing that we don't know is how do we get money from the cities? Who did they pay? That's our only question at this point, which doesn't need to be decided today, but that's our only question if the cities pay the county and then the county, but we're going to have to spend our, our money also.
Right.
So that's the only question and we're working on that.
Right. So I don't, and Lisa mentioned, maybe it's a call to Jamie Cashman and Lucas.
Yeah.
At some point and say, you know, where, how do we proceed? And this is what our tensions are. Ta ta ta. We want to be in a straight line here.
Yep. Yeah, so that's.
Chad has any input that he'd like to say, but I mean, I know we've been, we know, although we've been kicking this can for a long time and they gave us a quote four months ago when our timeframe was.
Today's the day.
Well, next week.
Oh, the twenty eight. That's right.
Yeah, so it was, it was just really interesting conversation last week. I didn't realize that that the state contracted funnel down to the county contract and we weren't going to go out and look at all of these different companies. I mean, it's my understanding is that we're basically matching up to the state system.
Well, when you and I and Sarah discussed it, she wasn't sure either.
We had no idea. So now this totally makes sense.
Yeah.
So I guess at that point I would, I'm in favor of moving forward with this. Like I said, me and Lynn and Brad, granted, uh, the nine one one board have visited several city councils already and we have nothing but positive feedback from them. And I think it's time that we move forward with the council. That's.
I couldn't agree more.
So that motion was to be to move forward with the purchase of the council as, as per the contract.
Okay, next second.
What a motion and a second to proceed. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
I think now that's all I have.
We'll stop you when you get halfway back.
Yeah, I'm sure you will. Thank you.
Okay, Steve, did you have something that you wanted to address the board on?
I do. Thank you. I'm here representing the Eagles thirty eight sixty six of McCoke.
Oh, yes.
And I think you may have been given some paperwork.
Yes.
Of non five oh one C three fiscal sponsorship that was requesting that you once again support us in Eagles are filing a grant with the Jackson County foundation to receive monies to purchase grills for their rot stand for their fundraising and according to, I guess, national law with all organizations, you have to be a five oh one C three to apply or have a partnership with someone that holds that. And it simply becomes a pass through situation where they send a check to the supporting or sponsor and then that's passed on. It's just their system, I guess. It has no financial ramifications for the sponsor or no cost associated. Basically, just a connection to a five oh one C three to become to follow their rules, I guess. So I'm here asking if the board would be willing to be a sponsor. Once again, we've done it three. This is the third time you've sponsored us twice and we were successful in our first grant, not so much in the last one in two thousand nineteen. And asking again if you would support us for, for this grant.
You had the original paperwork.
I have the original paperwork right here. Todd Raider.
It's on my agenda. So, so if you, if you agree to, it's on my agenda. If you agree to support them this morning, then I would ask for a motion to approve and authorize the chair to sign a non five oh one C three fiscal sponsorship agreement with the community foundation of Jackson County to sponsor the paternal order of Eagles number three thirty eight sixty six, enabling them to apply for a grant for one thousand and seventy nine dollars to replace their cooking grills used for fundraising.
I would move to approve that.
I would second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All right, aye, motion carrying.
And I need a signature.
Okay, sure.
Good word. Tell as many brothers as you can. Well, as I explained in the grant, it's, you know, these, this seems like a small item, but it.
Hard to make a living that way.
A lot of fundraising efforts and a lot of.
Absolutely.
A lot of volunteer hours.
Good things that happen to the, for the community through it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Does she have a copy of that?
No, I, did she?
I would like a copy of that. Yes, you would do that. I would appreciate that. I would like a copy of that. Yes, you would do that. I would appreciate that.
Okay, um, and this time we'll recess till we're joined by Lynn Bulbs and then we have Ryan Conley. Those are work sessions, but I know most people like to hear what Lynn has to say. And after yesterday's governing. There's a lot to be said.
We are ready for you. You want to wonder whether.
We just will reconvene and we just have two work sessions left and there's probably no action. They're just department updates. So at this time, we would be available to. To adjourn the meeting.
I make motion to adjourn.
I would second.
A motion in a second to adjourn. All those in favor?
All right.
Hi, motion carry.
Bye, everybody.
Have a good time.
Drive safe.